Good evening. Welcome to the January two thousand twenty-three Antrim Planning Board meeting. Jay, where are you?
Yes.
Yes, can you? We approve a minute, can you call the role first, though?
Bob Roach.
Here.
Erin Robertson.
Here.
Joe Cracker.
Here.
Jan Rager.
She on Zoom?
Did he say that she was going to not do? Palmer Mervin.
Here.
Colleen Muntz.
Here.
Hello, Matt.
Here.
All right, so we'll start with the approval of the minutes. We have four months of minutes to go through. The first one is August twenty twenty-two. Any comments or changes on the August minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, oh. Someone make a motion?
No motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. August minutes are approved. The next one, the October minutes. Any comments, changes? Concerns? I'll accept a motion.
Second.
All in favor to approve the October minutes?
Aye.
So moved, October minutes are approved. November minutes, comments, changes, concerns?
Didn't have any.
No.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The November minutes are approved. Please just the December minutes, same.
Didn't have any.
Comments, changes, anything?
Motion. Second.
All in favor? All right, so all were up to date and all our minutes done, please get them posted in the right place ASAP. Thank you. All right, correspondence, John?
So there happened to for one resignation and another planning board member announced their intent to resign. So as a result, Joe Cracker will be in the next meeting. And then also receiving a draw Iron Star.
Okay, so, um, with that being said, I don't know, for those that don't know, John Ingram, who had been the chairman, I think at least twelve years has stepped down. I'd just like to thank John for his, at least twelve years of service to the planning board in the town of Antrim. So thank you, John, for your dedicated service. You will be missed. And then at five o'clock, we got a an email from Jim Stickles, who is also stepping down as a member, and we appreciate his dedication to the planning board. And I, we were trying to figure how long he's been on, but it's been at least twelve years. So thank you, Jim, and for your service and you'll be missed also. So that being said, um, the correspondence was on Iron Stars withdrawing their application without prejudice, so they will no longer be on any agenda unless they refile a new application. So I guess that's, oh, yeah, oh, and ONG.
Yeah, we received word from Don Lyons, the chairman for Antrim, that he was not finished with his investigation. And that was all the opposite end of this, not putting him in the agenda. And we've advised that it will be during February. And that's the second one.
Okay, that being said, we opened the public hearing in November. The public hearing remains open, so anybody interested in that application, they should look at the town website for the agenda and make themselves familiar if it will, as definitely be on in February. We expect it to be, but things change, so, okay. Um, reorganization. As Jay had mentioned, I think the town board is going to appoint me chairman of the planning board, but that won't happen till the nineteenth of January, which is their reorganization meeting. Um, but within our group, we need to select a vice chairman, so is anybody interested in volunteering to be vice chairman?
Yeah. I'm volunteering, Harry.
Not nominating, I'm looking for volunteers.
No one else is interested?
I can do it if I prefer to Aaron.
You're not, you're not gonna leave soon, are you?
I don't know. I don't have any plans to, but you know, strange things have been known to happen, so. Um, so is it between Colleen and Aaron, or?
I'll do it if you're.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so okay, so our selection is Aaron for vice chairman. Is everybody all right with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, you will, we'll pass that on to the town board that Aaron has volunteered to be vice chairman.
So, um, I will ask for a motion in a second on the consensus of the planning board being they are electing Aaron Robertson as the vice chair and recognize that that may noted in a firm by
this official.
Okay. Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I agree.
And I guess it's a motion for Eric.
Take a motion.
A second.
Aye.
Aye, right.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Couple more reorganizations, um, in the past, we have had Thursdays on, meetings on the first Thursday of the month. That's the for everyone.
Yes, I believe so.
So then we will have the town board respond that means that each event has to be
Oh, yeah, oh, that'll be a notice.
The alternates should be advertised.
Right, so did we also talk about reorganizing that? Colleen and so, and so get moved and
I think that's just up to the town board. They've been, they're alternate, so it's up to them.
Definitely we give a recognition, like you would give a recognition.
Yeah, I mean, we
Right, so should we do that now, too?
If you think it's suitable, go ahead.
Yeah, because we're all in agreement for them.
I hope that they do.
That's right. All in favor?
Aye.
So we've decided that our alternates should now become full-time members. There were a couple of resumes submitted for new alternate members. I would like to invite anybody else in the audience or on Zoom that like to take an opportunity to be on the planning board, please submit your resume. We'll be doing interviews shortly. The more the merrier, so.
Have someone reading their names on Zoom, don't know what they on Zoom, if it happens something.
Yeah, if you want to let them in.
Hello?
Yes, yes.
Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when, when Jay, Jay Hoffman speaks, I can't hear him. I'm, I'm trying to intend on, in Zoom. I can hear people at the main table. But I can't hear, can't hear her clearly. I don't know if there's any way to move up the volume or recede him so he's closer to you all? Just letting you know that it's
Move to the corner? You can?
Me set up on the table.
Right.
Yeah, try that.
Say something, Jay. Is that better? This is me, can you hear him?
Too much, he cut off.
Now?
Do you hear anybody?
I hear you more clearly. That worked.
Yeah. From here? Do you hear them now? No. And just if you can focus yourself.
While we're doing that, the wait list, Anne has been present tonight because she's on Zoom.
Yeah, that's not, this is me, that's it's on
Jay, anything else on the reorganization number?
There will be some other discussion at the end of the day.
Okay. We've got care personnel. All right, conflict check. The last, the last application tonight is an informal presentation on a piece of property that my wife and I own. It's up for sale. The application says owner, but with their contract ending, so I have to recuse myself at this point. Colleen is familiar with it and she'll just share that application. I will be second to the side, and then we will be re uh of readjourning to discuss a memo and the town board recommending fees and some procedural things, but after the last application, there'll be no more approval business, so anybody that wants to hang around, listen, they're welcome, but it's going to be sausage for the most part, so. Okay. All bring up the complex. All business, mind check. And give us a brief overview, any changes, room for made, anything?
Well, yeah.
Public hearing, is everything in order?
So, um, the new changes you have, and the only change since the last submittal was to show the fire truck turnaround, which is on the second page of the two pages that were
Public and the initial review of this.
Oh, yes. So the project is for a single-family residence on a property, a twelve-acre property located at six, seven, 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 Route twenty-two. Um, it is a twenty-three-hundred-square-foot home with obviously septic on an existing steep slope property in a scenic over corridor. So the project consists of the new house and a new septic essentially, and some upgrades to a driveway, existing driveway.
That's it. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearings.
Second.
Okay. Okay, the public hearing's open. Let's go with board members. Does anybody have any comments, thoughts, concerns?
Just one question on the fire trucks. Did David Vois see this? This was coming from the fire truck turnaround? Did we consult the fire?
No. None of the other ones changed. You just add this other option.
This is optional, no, they made this they've made this larger here.
Yeah. Right. So the last turnaround has been shifted over. It's not, it's further east than it was previously when you saw it on the last previous site plan. And then the fire truck turnaround was added, and there's an option too for that one emergency turnoff, which I have to go to the fire department and get a bearings for in order for that to be brought.
You'd be the one on the building that we saw.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So I have to submit an application for that.
Yeah, we can approve this and that come back as a matter of amendment. We get it approved. We want to go forward with that. Anyone else?
No, that would be the only change.
Okay, so anybody from the public on Zoom that like to type a comment? Yeah, just identify yourself.
Chitty, boss, and cornet, in your plan, if I read it correctly, you said that you are having to buy a new house, but it's septic three. Are you planning on eventually going to three?
Maybe. I might, but I want to set it up for that. In case I want to put on only you on sometime in the future, so I have no plans for this. But it just seemed to make sense to increase the size of the septic, yeah. Okay.
I'm concerned about the septic because you're on a high ridge, which probably does not have a lot of sport. So, um, I'm not into that, but I gotta tell you that I'm a little worried that it may not work, so I'm hoping that it has some
Oh, well, it's been fully engineered and we're bringing through the bill, which is required in that book, so that should not be a problem.
Okay.
And the septic is also actually located on the bottom part of that stuff.
Okay. And I, I am concerned about the scenic corridor overlay. You're higher. You have plans to cut the trees for you.
Please address the board, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't, I'm supposed to ask these questions?
Just, just speak that.
Okay, I am concerned about putting trees for the view, which would to me affect the scenic corridor overlay.
So the existing site is already clear? And notes for further trees will be cut?
There are no other trees to be removed?
No. That's where the septic is going, and then we saw that, that they were very young while the saddle purchase. So there's no large tree, no significant you know, old growth trees there at all locations.
And the one tree that was in question, you adjusted the driveway.
Yeah, there's two gigantic oak here that are really significant. Yes, I want to keep those, do everything I can to keep those.
No one else? Thomas, anybody on Zoom waving? What, everybody? Okay. I'd like to make a motion of public hearing. Second. All in favor? Aye. Um, I guess the first order of business is sequence, Jay.
Did, did, did that before? Did we declare, we didn't, yeah, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I think we're on it.
It has the sweet permit. And the erosion control, that's in the file. Approved plan for the septic is in the file. We have everything we need. So. Need a motion on equal. Okay. So. And
My son, or the, no, this is that night, that was all you remember that.
Yeah. I think that the Antrim has initiated or at least, you know, improved the site plan to make to buy the
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Not initially. We have motion for negative declaration.
Yeah.
Second. I'll say. All in favor? Aye, negative approved. Now, the site plan. Jay had prepared a resolution.
Yes.
Everybody looked at the resolution. I didn't put that in fact.
So the goal is to vote on this.
Um, I wasn't sure what the process would be.
Uh, did anybody else get a look at it? It just came today.
I did not. I did not, okay.
Yeah.
Had a chance to, so.
So.
The, in this, I mean, to talk about this resolution, this is something new for us that we've never done before at meeting.
That's, as, as a result of Nan's comments, which she had also contemplated that this would be a process that would take place over multiple this.
This resolution
would be
On other
Like, um, application. So it's my understanding that based on her comments, what she had anticipated was that the public hearing would be closed. Either a resolution would be prepared then, or environmental review would also be conducted then. And then having the draft available, and then public comment incorporated if necessary to be approved at
Yeah, the idea of staging loans, so that you get their building cost quicker.
Speeding along, but doing, doing the correct process.
And each of these warehouses is being a step in that process, not just a warehouse.
Right. So like, if you look at, um, one of the warehouses, it's, it's left plane. So that would be when the public hearing was conducted, it was now conducted today and quarters.
There's, there was just one question about the so that was the, the next that we just did today, so that that would be here.
So is the, did the intent for this document sort of be the same? This is our template going over the
That's, um, a template based on boilerplate with the application specifics incorporated.
So is this something that my project is? Is this something that I need to know? Because I haven't received this. For the board to check off all the things that we have approved along the way. It's a
It's, it's the resolution for
Our
It's informal, we've checked, we've looked at.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Then you take it to get the building. I see. So I need to have all these things checked off before I can submit my plan. We need to prove this last
Basically.
They're, basically, we've done it already. Okay. And Oh, and then you submit that directly to the buildings department or to me?
Um, you would get a copy, the copy would be filed and people develop and see the building. If all conditions are met. Um, that are like, I know there was a comment about turnout, so that would be potentially added as a condition. And then that may have to be met prior to getting
Yeah, I was gonna add that as a condition of permit that the part of law they don't have to go back there for that.
So is that the local side of the
Yeah. The chief would look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can verify a truck around this area or not.
Okay, and just procedurally, I have to contact him or you contact?
You, you'll have to reach out there.
Okay.
Either be with them or get them a plan.
A letter of approval or acceptance should suffice. I don't know what their process is.
Usually the chief will go out, take a look at it, and go to the site, maybe take some measurements, um, just to make sure. But it would seem to me, although I don't normally do this, that some sort of documentation that he was there would be
I think he, they have already been did he go with
No.
Now, um, will you do the attendance at the site, while?
So normally we vote to approve, and then things like this are added on later.
I think we
Yeah. So
we need to have that written for us, the sign, the nine were
I think we can approve the site plan and then approve the resolution. You're not ready to file a permit, are you? Yeah, you have a file. I think that's, this is procedural.
Right, so normally we have approved and with the, the one condition that we are all agreeing on. And so it's just that we got to see the list now, where we don't normally see the list, but this is usually what we're voting to approve.
That should, we're talking just memorialize it.
Yeah. But we can memorialize that next, or give her a site. Yeah, and has any concern he can fall here about the day about issuing the permit? So, I'll take a motion for site plan condition.
Second. Right.
A motion to accept the site plan with the condition of the fire department, or if you don't want to turn around?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to vote on?
Yes, let's go roll call.
So that probably should be added on to the bottom, that Jay is
Just to report, because it just doesn't show.
Yeah.
Over. Over, turning.
Aye.
Aaron Robertson.
Aye.
Joe Cracker.
Aye.
Bob Roach.
Aye.
Colleen Muntz.
Aye.
Hello, Matt.
Aye.
Thank you.
You don't have to attend, I don't think, next month if we're gonna formally approve this. Don't, please do this. Yeah, so we'll just vote on it, and we'll get that, so you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey. Moving on to new business. Ron Dolo, did I say that right?
Uh, yes, you did.
There you are.
One thing that you should use, I can probably already do this, but just make sure that Monica also gets a copy of the resolution.
I don't didn't talk with you privately, prior
Alright. Yeah.
Yeah, everything is filed, the plan, the minutes, approvals, everything is filed. Okay. Ron Dolo, did I say that correctly?
Uh, yes, you did. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Like to give an overview on your special use permit for a short-term rental.
Yes. Uh, basically, we've had this house since two thousand eleven. We've decided to try a couple of weeks a year of short-term rental and on through the application process, and I think you probably have everything there in an application. The house has been inspected by the building department. And I can answer any other questions that you might have.
Yeah, what's your terms of rental days and number of occupants you're gonna permit?
Oh, we're renting it a, probably a week at a time, and the occupancy would be most likely limited to six, based on a three-bedroom. And we're, we're kind of geared towards families, because we have a one-bedroom has a twin bed and a crib.
Did you attach a maximum occupancy? Did you attach a maximum occupancy to the rental?
That's that's what I'm gearing toward, yes.
What's the number?
Uh, six.
Six, that's that's what I'm looking for. That's the max and maximum occupancy. Jay, is everything in order with Ed?
Yep.
Every little bit complied with.
You have like you have the same, you know, some of the forms.
I have a question. Which is more of a technicality, my view of the specific um. Inspection, and I noticed it was thirty five years ago, and it was to a different name. It wasn't to. Yeah, the current owner.
Oh, that I mean, I bought the property in in two thousand eleven from the O'Learys.
It's a temporary recent inspection. But I did get through it from that. I can.
Yeah, he went through it and I talked to him, just. It's a technique.
Yeah, I was under the impression as we inspected recently, I'm sure it's still thirty years ago, could be functioning fine now like that.
I mean. We haven't had any issues with it and we, you know, had Thanksgiving with about uh, twenty people over. I do get it pumped out every two years.
Yeah, I don't think it says um, the timeline on that or that.
That's interesting, okay. So. Well, that being said, Jay, we're we're a physician who approached us. Uh, no.
The other thing is, I just want to jump in, but the um, a special use permit requires secret.
Yeah. Um, so. The process would for the short term rentals would be you could do a sketch plan approval. Uh, name yourselves, lead agency, notice it for public hearing. To see. Okay.
Okay, and then uh, is is that going to be required to to EAF?
Should we end the file? We'll leave it for.
No, I didn't say that. Say this question.
Especially your bus.
Okay.
Yeah.
No more questions?
Well, give them. So I can I hear a motion for sketch plan approval? I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. So we're gonna declare ourselves lead agency, and I get a motion for lead agency.
Motion.
All in favor? Alright, so we'll lead agents, see if they have a secret application.
She said there is, it's.
Only in front of there was, so.
Yeah, but there is.
Yeah.
They did fill out the short form. Overall, it looks good. There's, this is an interesting thing and it has nothing to do with the I look in. Um, if you do the online EAF mapper, it comes up with uh. That that there is a. A wetland or a regular water body. It it's coming, it's coming up as yes. Um, the advocate indicated no, but I can't actually find on the EAC map. That there actually is a wetland on top.
Yeah, so it's maybe.
I don't even see it. Um. So I was actually gonna. Why that one? So, because it does not. But other than that, I mean, everything else is.
There's there's no development, so it's there.
Right.
There.
Right. It's just the fact that the the actual first part of the short form would be into that, if this was true. That was, that makes sense.
Sorry, I need to check if people know the next meeting.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
We'll we'll look, the board will get to that.
Yeah, I I don't believe it's something that the.
Reason, so.
Yeah.
This is uh, I don't know, this is two ninety under the under Mountain Road, so we're gonna schedule on the Mount Road for a public hearing for February. Mr. Ron Dolo, you understand the next step of the procedure?
Uh, yes, I I cut out for a bit, but my understanding is that we'll have a public hearing in February.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you can check with Jay on the requirements, the mailing, the notice, and then he also contact Jay as soon as possible and. Get it into work, so everything is in place for February. So can you get him the motion? We get a motion to.
Okay, I'll contact him next week.
Okay. Second. Okay. Alright, so public hearing is set for February second. Okay, and um, I did want to provide information um, that was responsive to Colin's point. Normally, I help the applicant fill out the EAF and the ag data statement. Unfortunately, the town of Ankrum did not have internet access on uh, Friday, December twenty third. So I was using my cell phone. Um, looking up neighbors and I I guess on a wetland. So, um, I also don't know specifically what was there with regard to um. Endangered or threatened species, but I guess not that long too.
Um, we were right on, we were right on that, and and the wetland.
Yeah.
So. That could be amended. It would just would need to be amended, that's all. Um.
So I'll be in touch with the applicant if necessary regarding that. Okay, so we're all set. Okay, um, next application is the Ankrum Opera House. This is a free application process, so somebody here. On Ankrum Opera House, we had. It is definitely.
Um, my name is Kim Ackert. I'm architect helping out with the Ankrum Opera House. Um, and it's. Kevin Paul, we are running Opera House and uh, awesome Scott Benedict has been helping me on this. I'll just have for the. Updates on one of the plans that I picked together, I'll just pass them on to.
Is this something different?
Yeah, it's just an update on, I think, sheet three or four. I just added a couple of dimensions for clarity. Um. Why advance this slide? I just.
The statements.
Yeah, okay, um. Okay, so um. Yeah, this is uh, as you already know, more of an informational conference, so the purpose of the presentation is basically. Uh, twofold. One is to just uh, familiarize all of you with the project. Which is located on County Route seven, near the main intersection of town. And the other reason is just for us to learn a little bit more about the process and what some of the next steps might be for the for the project. So as you can see from this rendering, the project involves these two existing buildings, um, the Ankrum Opera House, which I'm sure all of you know already. And the adjacent two story building, uh, the little yellow house at thirteen twenty six, um, County Route seven. Um, so this rendering uh, reflects the main ambition of the project, which is to functionally uh. Functionally, visually, and conceptually join the buildings together. Um, so the presentation is broken into three parts. Um. Let me go to the next slide. Yeah, the um, the first part is um. To introduce the site and zoning information for the affected properties. The second is uh, the existing and proposed plans, elevation and photographs of both buildings. And then the last part is just filing questions and process. Um. So you just go back to the first part there. Yeah, that's perfect. Um, so you can see from this slide, although our ambition is to join all the properties, what we are dealing with is that. Um, the two properties actually have two different owners. So the opera house is is owned privately by Jeff and Paul and the yellow house is purchased by the Ankrum Opera House. Um, there is a third property on the map there, which is just um, a parking lot that serves the opera house. Um, next slide. So this is the existing condition, and what we've drawn here, um, you can see all of what is shown in green are the setbacks of the property. Um, and then we have also copied the table for this zone, which is the AHVR district, um. Which is a business and residential. The setbacks in this zone are uh. Rear yard is forty feet, the side yards are ten, and the front are twenty foot from the center line of Route seven. So uh, from this map, you can see right away that the yellow house is actually its grandfathered in, but most of the properties actually already in the setbacks. The opera house encroaches slightly on the side yard. Um, next. Um. So this is the proposed, a blow up of the proposed architectural site plan for thirteen twenty six. Um, and what we're showing here is that we do actually um. Uh, make this design work, we would need um, some variances because we uh. Landing for our ADA ramp at the very top of the porch, actually when it approaches into the side yard setback. And then parts of a proposed um, covered porch and an open porch are encroaching both into the side yard and the rear yard setbacks. So those are a a couple of the issues that we've been discussing already with um, with the with the building department. Next slide. So um, here is a a site plan, a survey of the uh, the yellow house. Um, there is already uh, functioning well, and there is um, septic and beach fields that are there. Although um, apparently they need quite a bit of repair at this stage, and we have hired. Uh, Pat Prendergast, who's working on it, and I think he was there maybe yesterday to take some soil samples, so we're investigating what needs to occur with that. Um. Next slide. So uh, here we put side by side the existing and proposed plans. This is the blockout basement level on the left, and existing is really just. Uh, some mechanical equipment and um, some laundry. Uh, we're proposing to keep it pretty much the same, mechanical storage and laundry. Next slide. On the ground level, the existing, it's a, it's a um, one bedroom on the first floor, bathroom, kitchen, living area, dining area. Um, we're proposing pretty much to keep the floor plan the same. The big changes here are that we would be converting. Uh, what is now this sort of dining area, which is adjacent to the open kitchen, into a multi-use room. That would be separated from the rest of the house by a fire rated partition. Um, this multi-use area would have its own dedicated entrance and dedicated um, ADA bathroom. And we would also be, um, we have designed in a ramp to reach the porch, which is elevated by maybe twelve inches of a degree. Um. On the other side, on the living side on the first floor, it would be the house would remain pretty much as is. With a kitchen, um, a full bathroom, one single bedroom in the corner, and a living area. And then upstairs, on the next slide. Uh, the house remains pretty much as it is laid out now with two bedrooms and a full bathroom. We have the elevations, the next slide. Um, this is the front of the house. Um, what's drawn in in gray is what is proposed to be reworked and removed. The lower roof on the um, left hand side of the of the main house needs to be rebuilt. And we're proposing here taking off the overhang because it's just so close to the road that we're encouraging people not to use that entrance actually in the future. Next slide. Um, here you can see that um, the roof that's gonna be reworked, we would be. Um, re-cladding the house, all brand new windows, all brand new roof. And uh, here you can see the new porch, a covered porch on the side elevation. I think the next slide is the rear elevation where we're just gonna actually adding some windows. Um, and and re-cladding. Um, I've also included some photographs, so um, this is, you're all familiar with this, up of Route seven, looking in different directions. And then the following slides. Uh, give you an overview of some of the work that we're proposing to do. Um, from the outside, as I was already saying, the canopy would come off. And um, on the interior. Next slide. Next slide. So in the interior, there's some, um, you can see the house really does need quite a lot of work. Um. Whatever historic material is there, we would be retaining. There's some nice floorboards, some open beams. Um, but a lot of the house is really not original, um, and and needs to be updated. It's the kitchen. And then next slide. Uh, the bathroom, next slide. And then uh, upstairs, you can see there are some uh, nice old beans, hand deep beans, those have been kept. And then the next slide, uh, these are the bedrooms. You can see on the two bottom images, I'm standing there, and one of them is. There was a dormer that was added to the rear of the house that's very, very low headroom. Um, I could barely stand up in there, and um. So we're proposing to actually take that floor out and create a double height ceiling below, which I think will be really nice. Um, and then this is the the basement, which is really a mess. I mean, we'd be cleaning this up, using it for mechanical. And um, some storage for the theater and laundry. The last uh, part of the project is actually in the opera house itself. Jeff and Paul want to make the opera house fully accessible, and so our idea is to rework the office. In the front part of the building and um, convert that into um, an ADA bathroom. And then also reconfigure the front porch with a ramp. Um, we would also have some additional storage facing into the theater with the uh, extra room. Um, there's a picture uh, page here of the existing foyer, which will pretty much remain as is. Um, and then the office um, would be converted into a bathroom. And then on the last page are just some of the uh, questions that we've been discussing. We've had a couple of meetings with Ed and Jay both. Um, to try to talk over um, the way that we feel that we want the project to. Progress and we recognize that the house, while it still is kind of a house, is not going to be used in exactly the way it is, has been used previously. So it was a single family home, it's three bedrooms. Um. It's now going to be used as sort of a multipurpose room, where um, Jeff and Paul can maybe speak a little bit about some of the functions that they. Would like to see happen there, and some of the bedrooms will not be used for full time residences. They'd be more used as an intern. They'd be more used as an internship uh program. So it's kind of temporary artist intern housing to support the Ingram Opera House. So we're not quite clear, we know it's a mixed use, um. But it's not really an institution, so it's a little bit of an odd burden way. Um, and then we would need setback variances for the ramp landing zone and drop-off zone. And then uh the opera house itself, again, it's a separate owner, so it would do its own separate project. And that would need a varying setback for the proposed ramp in landing area, which actually encroaches into the side yard setback. Um, so that's kind of where we're at right now, um. I don't know, would you guys like to add something?
Yeah, thanks Kimberly. Hi, I'm Paul Richardi, uh project director of the Ingram Opera House. Just just a couple of things just to clarify because it gets kind of confusing. So um the building that you know is the Ingram Opera House is indeed uh owned by an LLC, the Jeff and I home. Our board of directors for the nonprofit organization um that runs the theater, the Ingram Opera House. Has signed a lease, it's a ten-year uh lease option to renew uh for a dollar a year. So that building is rented by nonprofit, the Ingram Opera House. The building next door, the yellow building uh that we spent most of our time looking at. Is need owned by the five oh one C three nonprofit, so I just wanted to make that clear and thank you for your time.
Great presentation.
Well, thank you.
Very clear, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Myself, that's a question.
Yeah.
The use of the building you're renovating right now, vacant?
It's vacant, yeah.
A one-family house?
It's a, yeah, single-family residence, right.
And you're kind of converting it to a two-family house?
Well. I don't really think it's uh being converted to a two-family, um, I mean. It still has three bedrooms and all the bedrooms are actually still in the same portion of the house. So what we're doing is partitioning off, what we're saying is that multipurpose room. And the bathroom and an entrance to kind of isolate that for use as sort of like a rehearsal area or an office. Um, and then the rest of the house really does function kind of like a single-family residence. One kitchen, that's correct.
The second floor is access from inside?
Yes.
The only connection to the opera house then is the conference from the bathroom that's going to be a shared.
Yes, yeah.
For the rest of the building is going to be used. I don't know, hard to put it this way, it's not a single-family home, but it's not a.
Right.
It's not a hotel.
It's not a hotel, no, it's uh not. Charging rent or rooms or anything like that, it's meant as a. As uh sort of support for interns and artists.
That, um, anybody else have any question?
Yeah.
I don't know, is that?
Well.
What would be the use though, I guess, is is it just a mixed use?
I mean, it is, yeah, I mean.
Yeah. Is it, I mean, I guess it is.
What is the zone issue?
It's the A H V R. Business residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Both.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
So that's. Yeah.
Now I have any problem with the the variances for the. Approvements, um.
Those are area variances.
They're area variances, I mean. If it's on the use, I don't know. I guess Ed has to make a determination like.
That's why, maybe we should talk to you. So he said, maybe we should talk to you guys about the use. Um, well, I mean, I guess.
Idea that.
Yeah.
Then we'll be exposed.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to familiarize all of you with what we're doing. Um, I mean, it is kind of commercial, but we're, I mean, the opera house really isn't.
So what's the opera house? Cause you live there?
We do, we live in a loft space above the, so if you look at that. The two windows built into the dormer uh on the top floor of the opera house, that is residence.
So it's the same kind of idea with people that are going to be residing in the new structure or not as permanent. You are, but they're your guests.
Well, they're employees, they're employees.
They're employees, oh, okay.
Their guests are the performing artists and oriented, oriented.
Yeah.
On on contract.
No, I don't think it's residential, really, it's it's business.
Yeah.
With the place to sleep over, yes. Yeah, they.
I mean, it's a single-family home from it in the district, that's what it is.
Oh, yeah, so business owners.
Yeah, yeah. And it wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, it's a single family home for the conference room, it's not.
Yeah, so it's it's a residential commercial use.
People's wondering about on the site plan was whether the septic was going to remain here at days.
Yeah, well, the septic is a concern.
It's a, it's a little bit of a concern, it's uh much closer on the wow. But of course, it probably pre-made then sort of.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it could be assessable.
Yeah. So.
Well, they hired.
Like, I mean, I'm just wondering.
Yeah. I mean, it's just going to need site plan approval or something for us?
Um, so I don't think you've even submitted a building permit application yet, so um. There's. There's probably going to be site plan approval. It'll probably be seen as some type of commercial. So this is kind of a pre-application process for the conference. So I think we said that it would be like a three-month process. Um, it would also go to the consultant, you know, who could also weigh in and clarify.
Yeah, yeah, well, definitely, that was our thing about any new commercial things too. Have reviewed by consultant, so to help us. Through that, so um yeah, tell us exactly where the the use table.
Really, until they file something, we can't do anything official.
But I don't think. Um, so for the for the use variance, I can need to get, I mean, the um, the area variance. What is the distance to the property line, so I. Um. Yeah, actually, the sheet that I just passed out to you guys um has the.
It actually shows, I think we need very minimal um.
So yeah, it shows you're eight foot ten inches into the setback.
Yes.
Oh, I see, and then.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so the grass landing is three, is about three foot three. And then we have a covered, proposed covered deck, which is of six foot three and then um. Minimizing down to five foot four and then eight foot ten on the side.
Are you improving or increasing with parking here?
We are aren't doing anything to the parking area right now.
Well, I guess we have to wait. For an application, you know, I don't have any major problems with it.
Um, the consultants that you talked about is that?
Man.
Okay, okay. And what is, what kind of a consultant is now?
The planner, she's worked with us developing zoning laws and she's. Been working with us for a lot of years, so.
Okay.
Yes, they did very well.
So we would submit that to her, our our plans or before we submit for a permit or I guess you can.
I think that the process is going to be that you would submit a building permit in. Either Ed or myself would refer it to the.
Okay.
After.
Okay. All right. Okay, so really it involves in our court now, we need to prepare the the plans, submit for the permit and then from there um. Consultant, we'll probably meet and with all of you again after the termination, right?
First, you have to go to the.
For these variances.
That's just.
We didn't try to change that.
Okay.
It's more expeditious for us to review it and refer it rather than then to get it referred back to us and in turn back to them. So that was going to be part of the decision.
Cause otherwise we'd have to, they'd have to reject the appeal, yeah, okay, I understand.
Okay, that's a better process. Oh, okay, so.
So, all right, thank you.
Good, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So lastly, um, we have one more on the case that I discussed at the beginning of the season, um, the steps aside. And um, like, Bob Suits is going to make a present. Yeah, I mean, hey.
Briefly, but always.
Hey. Well, thank you for uh allowing us to present our project at one thirty-two Carson Road this evening. Oh, fantastic.
Everybody took.
This was here on the table.
Everybody took copies of.
No, nobody.
It's right over there.
There's, there's one other copy, but um.
Just so that they have it in front of them.
Oh, yeah. And they have printed copies, so.
Yeah.
Well, as I said, thank you for allowing us to uh socialize our project this evening. My name's Brad Buck, I'm a registered architect in New York State. And I'm here on behalf of our clients uh with Freda Bernard, who are purchasing the property. And uh it was to prepare plans for a single-family house uh with an adjacent pool. Both of those uh elements are shown on the site plan, which you guys are all reviewing right now. Um, to date, we've. Had a surveyor come out, surveyor, the survey the property. We've had a wetlands soil scientist, soil specialist come out, flag wetlands on the property. Uh, we've had those tags put into the survey, so all of that is now shown. Um, the results of the wetland work is showcased uh in presentations, I don't know which page it actually is on. Um, the house itself, uh, the form of the house is a fairly simple. Gable structure, which is shown in this model. So um, this is facing north generally, if you look at the site plan towards the tonics. And this is facing south. And the top of the hill is here. And the great slopes like this. Uh, and so the architecture is inspired by global agricultural buildings and this generally simple gable forms. Um. We're trying to minimize the presence of the building on the land by pulling it down the hill. Um, so not maximizing uh our encroachment on any type of. View from the road uh or from uh adjacent properties. And that's shown on the on the site plan.
So you're gonna have to cross a wetland.
So there is an existing uh improved roadway that goes through that wetland. That uh is our only access up to the house area. And the intention is to utilize that, um, get across that wetland.
But that's gonna have to be rebuilt in any way and culvers, it's gonna be engineered?
Uh, my understanding is that uh we haven't fully evaluated that yet. Be completely truthful and open, um, it will have to be improved in some way. My understanding is that there's an existing culver underneath that, whether that needs to be improved, you know, we'll have to have a builder come out and take a look at that with us.
Um, I don't think so, but I would.
That wetland does not look, not located on any wetland map that we could find.
It's probably what they call an N W I wetland. If, if, you know, he's basing it on the soils, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
So we had concerns about it as as architects and vocalized that to our clients and then took it upon ourselves to bring out a soil. Engineer to, you know, soil scientist to look at it, just to make sure that we were being respectful of the place as much as we possibly could. Um, but we couldn't find that wetland, you know, designated anywhere uh on any state map or.
Right, but you're right, that doesn't mean it's not a wetland.
Exactly, exactly.
A lot of maps are outdated, not updated and things change, so.
Most, many of the maps in New York State are, so. Um, we, we spoke and we um agreed that they're going to add the buffer around the wetlands. So if you look, those, it does not include the buffer on those. So um.
You mean a repairing, repairing buffer or a distance buffer?
The distance.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, that may be true. So it does not show the buffer around the wetlands. So um the applicant is going to have that, um.
So we're gonna add that, we're also going to have a conversation with uh. With our soil scientists to look at the site plan and the location of the proposed roadway uh or driveway, I should call it. Um, and. Oblicit any feedback that they would be able to give us in terms of the impact that that may have on, you know, what they've located as a wetland.
Do we have permission to look at this site? I mean, I know it's switching over ownership right now, but that we could make a site visit and.
I'm sure that can be arranged.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't have authority to say yes to that, I have to. Yeah.
No, cause you're still, okay.
My wife gets nervous when she sees me driving around.
Yeah, oh, definitely. Um, that'll help us, but it's not flagged out or anything, yeah?
Uh, they're actually, it's nice that that way.
Yes.
Uh, so, so essentially there's an existing farm road that comes through here and I would say. Having seen my client start getting stuck in this general area, I would. Believe that are up by the road and you can walk down this, you can see this improved area that's here. Um, and the general condition of.
And then, oh, my, is it black, this and the locations of the house, is that there anything yet? Not maybe.
They're different than than what is on this and they're close to this and this line is not.
Anyway, so that you need to, we don't have an application, right? So like, once you do your application and then.
Um, there is a full application and it's included in your materials. Um, the applicant missed one form, which was updated and submitted. There is a question about the referral, but that's um, it's an administrative. So this is.
So we can go on.
An application.
Okay. Um.
And did they mark off that we that we that we need to make an appointment on this? Well, that's the next thing, Brad, really say this and to really understand where things are.
Uh huh.
This is, I'll make a site visit and then help, has seen it right now, it's just on paper.
Oh, I clearly syndicate, yes.
Yeah.
And it's checked, yes.
That we need to, we need to make an appointment and it's not with.
Well. If you want to be there, coordinate, you know, the one that I know about, there's no.
I'm happy to coordinate it and I can work with Joe and you, we can figure out the time that wants to do. Okay, yeah, then that's perfect, then we can.
The woman made the application.
But we need to, yeah.
Yeah.
Completely, they're not owner, they're contracting.
I, I, so. Yeah, we, and you'll help coordinate you and send out days of screening that are available.
I would say that we will make ourselves available any date that you would like. It could be tomorrow, I mean, it could be as soon as tomorrow, uh or any day on a weekend or. It could be tomorrow, I mean, it could be as soon as tomorrow, uh, or a, any day on a weekend or Mondays, Tuesdays of next week, or whenever it's convenient for you, we're happy to make that work.
So just a brief follow-up of the board, um, do Mondays and Fridays still work as best possible days?
Um. Yeah, well, yeah, cause I have technical work during the day and, and nighttime is not a good opportunity. So, uh, I can make it work.
Well, did we do a bad thing or are you?
Those are best for me, yeah.
I'm fine.
It'd be easier Saturday.
That's work for everybody, yeah.
Like the seventh?
Not, not at eight AM either, yeah.
Okay, if it's the full board, you need to notice that, right? So we would have to give a little time to be able to notice that.
Oh, yeah.
If, if it's like more than us.
What I was trying to do is do it in AM and PM, if the.
Yeah, okay, spread it out, okay, that work.
Yes. And you're gonna add the agricultural note on the site plan and you can coordinate with Jay about that or just the language.
Yep.
On that, um. And possibly a sheet with the elevations, which we think you may already have in your design.
We were happy to share elevations in our floor plans, um, in addition to the site plan, any, any details, built-in details, materials. Intentions for exterior lights, windows, locations, et cetera, et cetera. We're happy to share all that.
Maybe we'll get them as we can see it. So I think I am concerned it's so vital and this prep is so long.
Um, so we need a motion first, yeah.
So then that's another point.
They're on here.
They're on, yeah. They are, um, and it, it looks like there's probably adequate room, but I'm how to also turn around. We can have, we can have, we can have, send it to David to have him take a look at it and see. Right, um, as you're definitely gonna need to be able to turn around there.
Yeah, and there's gonna have to be, um, I mean, the driveway will have to be in here, the, um, not the, um, speeds, the, um. There's gonna be a disturbance of, and, and.
It's, yeah. Yeah, so yours, that it's a, it's a, just, that, that control. So plans. It's in here, which.
So then they did a grading, yeah.
So there is a grading plan for the driveway in there, um, which.
The most ones are, as I mean, in the end. Okay, so.
I think it would take more to pass, I think, I think, well, this is the driveway, they're filling the device over, making sure that the, uh, driveway slopes.
So one of my questions with these, and some of this is all going down, down, this drainage is going right towards the wetlands. That, in reality, we do not want to change any of the water drainage on the site from what's existing. It's the goal. And I'm not sure that the, the, uh, the, the speedies, is that the goal, I mean, this, this, reduce erosion. Um, so. I'm not sure what the erosion protections are here, um.
They're showing your road protection.
These parts.
But, but still, this is all draining down, no, I mean, there's a water all gonna go, it's gonna follow these side directions. Um, I think that needs to be. By now. Yeah, um, I mean, it's. It is a wetland and it is at the bottom of this driveway.
Yeah.
Uh, the, uh, this offense is a temporary thing, but it's always gonna be focusing water on the side of this driveway down this wetland, so. That is concerning.
I think that, uh, you know, one of the things that we've been thinking about was to make sure that the wetlands, you know, the person who demarcated that does have a chance to review our site plan and that driveway location. To give us a narrative and feedback. And they haven't done that specifically in relationship to that drive. Um, and then we'd be happy to share that narrative or they could also come and be part of a future conversation.
Um, it, it actually isn't on there.
Yeah.
But, um, they're buying them. We did, we did look at it, I mean, the other option would be for them to go around. But then they would be very close to the. The other wetland and also the proximity.
You still have to go through.
You're still gonna have to go through the first one, number one, which is existing.
That, there's only, that, that's, that's exactly right, but I think the thing that makes it actually super, super important is this step. Which is showing that, you know, this is the property boundary.
Right.
And this is the road.
Yeah.
That, that's.
It's already.
It's already crossing entirety of the site, so the site would be. If, if this wasn't permitted, the site would be undeveloped.
Right, right, um, I'm, I'm just talking about the, you know, trying to go around, go instead of bisecting those two. Going around and trying to, yeah, but, you know, number one, it could increase the disturb, overall disturbance of the site, like disturbing more. Like.
Have you checked it out?
I, I, I know where it is and I've been around it, but, um, the other option, the other issue could be that it's also really close to the other property line.
Right.
And that could be impactful to them. Um, I think if having the wetland scientists look at it and, you know, kind of do a little evaluation of the impact of that driveway has and.
Plus they have to put in, gonna have to underground power, you gotta wrench in, which can't be in the driveway. Where is that gonna go? So that's the.
We're more than happy to have, um, you know, the, the soil and set of scientists.
Yeah, they're, they're, I mean, I see that it's all frag, like, because it's not a, um, high-quality wetland.
Yeah.
Looks like the whole thing. That's what I said, it was like a.
Yeah, the, for the real part of this.
A little tall grass.
What's that?
That's real tall grass.
Yeah, that's a frag, so, it's pretty tall. I mean, we're very cognizant of this and we wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing, so, um, you know, we're interesting players on that, for sure.
It's not the protection zone, but it still is. It looks like this is the ridge right here.
If you look at this map, it'll show any, no, it's not actually that good zone, but it's still a ridge, right?
The, the, the high point is, is roughly. Somewhere here.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of this elevation, there's a lot of, this is, it's here and then it's. We're just not much information that we have, some survey information is almost at the exact elevation around the other side of the hill.
Yeah.
Um, and so we intentionally try to pull the building down from its elevation that. It would be good to propose it to you, um, and we think we're trying to navigate, you know. It's also, it's. And so I would say that, uh, I think the site visit will be, you know, eye-opening for a lot, for a lot of reasons, but I think if, if we were to imagine. You know, like this as the elevation that's basically facing the road. Um, you're gonna see very, very, very little of this building from.
Anything which.
Uh, Carson Road. Oriented more than this and Carson Road.
But it will be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Have you seen the town approach that about building at my elevations?
Uh, I can't say that I have.
Okay, we have one in the office, so it's a good guide of what the town is looking for.
Mm-hmm.
For, um, you know, and all the things they consider that's at these higher elevations.
Absolutely.
So, um, also a point of information, I had alluded to maybe a administrative problem in the referral. It was referred, um, as within the steep slope ridgeline protection, um, which is the red on the map.
Mm-hmm.
It is unlikely that it is. I can't make that determination. But, um, if you do go in this, it does have standards which, um, are suggested that people can fly away. So you may wanna take a look at it.
Okay. Yeah, it was our understanding that it was not located in that, based on that.
Yeah, it's not.
But it is still at a high elevation.
And we, and frankly, I think it goes both ways, I think, but I think the client, our client also wants to be a good neighbor and doesn't want their house sitting up.
Yeah.
Like completely visible from every direction and wants it to be part of the landscape and, uh. Partly the reason why, it's a very simple gabled structure, there's hopefully some humility there.
So, yeah, some more information that you'll gather, I don't know how much, I mean, if you're good at the site review, you can show us around.
Sounds great.
Yeah, that'll be fun.
Yeah, absolutely, um. So we'll, that's the major next step, it sounds like, and we'll, we'll work with Jay to organize the date and go from there. Does it make sense that that happens? I think we're on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Um, make a.
Like the.
This meeting. So, yeah, since you can, well, the, the next one is the site plan approval or sketch plan approvals. At, at this meeting we're doing, no, no, no information, we're not voting on anything.
That would be the next meeting.
The next meeting, and then either then you can give us that information about the driveway and the drainage and.
Sure.
Uh, I mean, you know, whether it works for the whole month, but.
Uh huh.
To get us, uh, either before we meet, to the team date before we meet.
So this is abbreviated, so. One meeting, um, for abbreviated site plan review, but, um, this does still have some.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and those questions can be answered by the next meeting, we perhaps we commit, then we could do everything, then we might be able to with it.
We'll certainly address anything that we heard this evening and make sure that we have elevations and a narrative from soil scientist. Um, if we can have a site visit between now and then, I mean, we will make ourselves available to make that happen. So, um, if we can do that, then I think we can be, you know, have a really earnest and great conversation, uh, in February.
Sound reasonable to everyone?
Hmm.
I think that would be a good outcome.
Yes, I agree.
Pretty, I think we, I think I understand homework, so we'll, we'll, we'll get right on it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, so if you have a question or anything, feel free to reach out to Jay.
Yeah, you have, you have been amazingly helpful, so thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks.
So. They were. So this is, wow, it's still a public meeting.
I guess so, just. You didn't get the memo, did you?
No. What on? I can't talk?
Oh, we, we wanna wait till the end of our discussion, we have a consultant that we have waited for.
Okay, you wanna wait till the very, very end of, of this discussion?
Sure. If you wanna move things around, then, go ahead, I mean, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
I think we call it a non-forg.
They third, yeah, okay. Um, and expect this to be.
Well, what is our, the planning board's objective with this, with your report, then, are we going to? Um, you know, there's asked a lot of questions and it's just the forum to do that, um, or would it be something written that we would? Get to the town board or, was it sure, but?
Yeah, well, so, I, I, whatever you like, I think the, the, the art wanted, the, um, folks to see. You know, kind of where it was going and if you had any other comments about it, uh, other suggestions or something that you disagree with? Or, you know, anything you might have to say about it, I think he, I, I think they just wanted you to have the opportunity to kind of see what we learned. And, um, you know, what some of the recommendations were, and you might have other recommendations that aren't on there yet. So, you know, it's just, it, it, the discussion tonight wasn't anything, uh, in particular, if you have comments you wanna talk about now, that's fine. If you feel more comfortable sending something over in writing, you know, just a simple email, that's fine too. Um, this is really, um, just an opportunity for you guys to jump in with other suggestions that we can. Include as we work to work on the process to make it more, um, to make it, you know, as efficient as we can and make it, uh, effective. So whatever you have to say, really.
And then Carol Folchetti, Z B A alternate, I have, we've been invited, so I do have some questions.
Okay.
Um. I'm not too sure what the process is going forward. We're going to discuss tonight, we're going to, those of us who are, um, inclined will write to you. What our comments are. Where does this go? Do you organize groups to hit, to handle some of your suggestions, which I think are excellent? Thank you. I'm just, I just need some kind of, uh, forward.
Right, right, so I, I don't know how to answer that fully, other than. If there are any edits, changes, or additions to this, this is a draft memo. And a-again, uh, you know, I think, um, I've talked about it with Art and he wanted everyone to have a chance to offer other input. Then my memo would, um, you know, I would reflect other input that I got, it's gonna be submitted to the town board. The town board has to decide, I mean, some things are policy or expenses that, you know, if the, if the town wanted to. Take on some of the bigger recommendations, those are town board decisions. Um, some of the things are internal to the planning board and you can decide, like for instance, one of the. One of the recommendations that I have in there is um. Some sort of approval form that when you guys make a decision on something, that it gets recorded the night that you make the decision. So that it can be filed within the five days that the zoning says that the decision has to be fi- uh filed in. So some of those things we can work on together, and I think the town board has. Generally asked me to help, but I don't really know exactly what, you know, what they want to. What steps they want to take, but I'm certainly um for those things that are just. Internal to the planning board and how you work and the papers that you have and the checklist and all of those things. You know, those I can certainly work directly with the ZBA and the planning board on, but some of the things that are policy. Um that the town would want to set up, that the board would, the town board would have to deal with that.
Well, it's a great report, yeah.
Well, I really appreciate, you know, that everyone that I did talk to had a lot of really good ideas, and there were a lot of things that folks had to say. So I was really just the recorder and organizer of the information. I mean, I guess I would be, whether it's, you know, I don't know if it's now, but at some point, it would be. It would be nice to get feedback from the planning board as to um, you know, what. Beyond the suggestions, the details of these things, and the same thing with, with Carol for the ZBA. Are there specific um forms, um information, checklists, um things that, that I can work on with Jay to get? To you, you know, anything that would help and organize. What we're really looking for is to have um a, a well organized flow. From the minute someone walks into the door with an idea of something to approval and then getting a building permit. So whatever we can do to help, other ideas that you have, I'm, you know, I'm certainly interested in hearing them.
Wonder if it would be helpful if he, as a planning board, have a document or tape, for example, she sent out a word document. If we all reviewed it and put our comments into it, which you can do.
Yeah, that might be an easy.
And then it might be easier for you, Nan, to have one document from the planning board with all of our comments in it. And that way we can all see each other's comments as well.
Sure. I can't remember, did I send it out in a Word document or a PDF?
Yeah, we sent both.
Both.
I sent both, okay. Uh yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that's fine. Um the, you know, if there are. I think that if there are ways that we can uh add some detail to the recommendations that you feel would. Steer it in the right direction without going to, you know, actually doing the work um. But you know, anything that you have to offer, I think we're, we're interested in hearing it um from both the planning board and the ZBA. And you know, like I said, the intent of this whole thing was to make it very clear. That what the process is, coordinate it with the, the requirements from the zoning law. So that kind of everybody knows the steps and everybody's role and, and I, I think that um. You know, I think there's some easy, some easy uh updates that we can do. I, I'd like to see um. Some preliminary work done on applications that come in so that you don't. Spin your wheels or, or the applicant get frustrated because they really don't have an application ready. To, to go through review yet. I mean, I think that's one of the things to work on, is that there, if we don't want to have. Um you know, informal discussions to get on the agenda to talk to you, you know, is fine, but. It, I think the message was loud and clear that there were things that aren't ready. You know, they don't meet the standards of the zoning in terms of the information, and so we need to work with the applicants to make sure those are. Those are done and get them updated in an efficient way. At least that's my perspective.
One of the things I think we have to look at is the timing of the submission to the applications. I think the ten day timeframe is much, much, much too short. If we're going to go in the direction of getting a review from a consultant like yourself, I think the ten days is much too short. It probably should be something more like three weeks. Maybe resubmission material could be ten days, but I think we have to extend it. I mean, we're talking about, you know, coordinating with zoning board meetings, I think. Um more than, I think, um if something needs a variance, I think it should start at the planning board, it would be most expeditious. That if we have to look at it and then we can forward it to the zoning board. Um without them having to look at it, to forward it to us, to forward it back to them. So I think some changes like that would help expedite um. The procedure, obviously, there's no perfect procedure and every.
Right.
Every patient is different, and all have different issues and different problems, but um. I think the timing we're using is much too short and then.
Okay.
Derailed, I think people lose a month rather than a week because the ten days is too short.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's, that's a policy of the town um that would. It would be something that we can add to the list that the zoning um revisions committee is looking at. That would have to be, ultimately, that would have to be a change to the procedures in the zoning law. Um but that's, you know, whatever the policy is, if that's what you feel it needs to be, we, we can make that change.
Yeah, I'm surprised it's in the law, is that this procedure, the planning board level, but it is in the code.
Yeah, it's usually in the code, it's usually spelled out how many days um.
Yeah.
That the applications have to come in, and, and it varies, some, some, some communities don't put a date on and accept things right up to the last minute, but. You know, i- in order to organize it, that just doesn't really work well. And some communities have, you know, a lot longer than ten days, they can be, you know, ten days, fifteen days, two we, three weeks, whatever.
Yeah, I'm, whatever, the other thing I, I brought a copy of into the building department today is a sign, I think the sign could be posted publicly.
Okay.
Um it's a disposable sign, uh sometimes make you have a sign guide uh posted, but it's a disposable sign that you can fill in the time and the date, the meeting. With a black magic marker, so it's probably a twenty dollar item, but finding some of these sites in these rural areas is not easily. Done, so it also gives an additional notification, but it also identifies the site.
Yeah, lots of communities use the sign, that, that's, that certainly is a good way to alert. Neighbors and other people that there's something before the planning board about that property.
Yeah, and it helps locate it for, for the applicant who posted, they'll know where their property is and, you know, us in the public can easily find it, so.
Okay.
Something else I think that should be added to our procedure.
Okay.
I think us as a board need to discuss our procedure and, and get it to where we want it. Um. There is a lot of other stuff in here that we have to, you know. Talk about, but I think some of our problems is the timing, I mean, the timing, the digital, the change, I know people are going to complain, but. Once you get into the flow of it, it's just the way it is in the real world.
Yeah. Okay.
And one, um, one of the problems I found at ZBA was uh getting the material. And my thought is, if an applicant could come in with a thumb drive with. Uh at least the application on, so that it could be posted and we wouldn't have to come in to get this material. Or.
Right.
Wouldn't have to send it to us, it would just be there.
Right. I, I totally agree with that, and I, I believe there's something in there on one of the recommendations about um. Posting all of these things to um, you, you know, either a site or a share site that the. ZBA and planning board members can easily access. Um I would say uh a lot of communities that I'm working with, uh when they're updating their zoning. They're adding in uh the requirement that when the application comes in, that uh that is, you know, however many paper copies plus a digital copy. So you know, certainly a thumb drive would work, they can bring it on a thumb drive, or they could just email, some of them are email, they're almost all emailable. Unless there's some like huge, huge project. But we make, you know, we can certainly make sure that, I think there's a recognition that. Part of the timing that Joe, you talked about is making sure that you all have the materials in enough time to review and be ready for the meeting. So that, you know, you're not just looking at something, uh you know, and you, you can't be expected to make a decision when you haven't seen it. And thought about it and gone through the rest of the process, so Carol, I'll make sure that that's emphasized in, in the report.
Yeah, we were going to recommend uh a PDF of everything coming to the planning board and. Set up a Dropbox system by the month. For the emails and the drawings, that way we can get to them, they're always there, you don't have to go through all this emails to find them. And the electronic copies um. You know, make it easier for us to get.
Definitely.
Regularly, planning department is the public notice, the return receipt is not required by state law. It prevents the app, the neighbors from actually getting the mailing. The state law only requires proof of mailing, the certified mail does it, it gets it to the people. And it's about three bucks cheaper for each mailing, so. That's something else I strongly recommend that they change, the return receipt defeats the purpose of the neighbor getting the mailing.
So you would rather have it delivered as a certified mail?
Certified mail.
Okay.
All does not require proof of receipt, it says proof of mail.
Okay, yeah. That's an easy one to make.
Yeah, the return receipt prevents the person from getting it because they never go to the post office to get it. I get stacks of certified mail back on applications that we do, hundreds of dollars worth of mailing, they just throw in the garbage. Because the people, if you don't go to the post office or you're at the door, it never gets delivered. But the, the state only requires proof of mail, green, the, the.
Right, right.
Yeah, so as long as you can prove your mail, it doesn't matter whether they get it or.
Yeah, one of the things from a, a process point of view, and we can, you know, we don't have to go into it tonight, it's just something for you to think about. I did have quite a bit in the memo about it um is, is recognizing the um. The importance of the, the planning board. Not jumping to um, not rushing into the public hearing. And that the first step is really the planning board determining whether the application is complete. I think that's something that we all need to work on um, the, because what happens is, is that once you set a public hearing. The timeframes for making the decision are set by the zoning law. And that, and that, you know, kind of. Forces you to move forward when you may not be ready to do that, you may not have all of the information, so. I really would like to see some more emphasis on the front end. To make sure that we are getting complete applications, that you are making a determination that an application is complete. As the first step and not setting the public hearing as the first step, because that, that just. Kind of artificially starts the time clock when we miss that first phase of completeness. So I just wanted to emphasize that, that I think there's some, you know, there's. That's also goes back to the timing of an application, and so just something for you all to think about.
Anybody else have any notes, thoughts?
Uh one of us has talked about like the digital, um getting everything in, in PDF and like a Dropbox system or something like that. Um where it's not all this email, but we would get a, you know, notification, but we would still get the paper copies here to go over when we're.
I know some folks do, they'll use just the paper copies, they're very helpful.
Yeah.
In my experience for laying out the map.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I would think that we keep the standard for the amount of paper copies that are required to get dropped off. Plus the, the digital step that, that we can have access to in the public and have access to.
Okay, yep, I, I agree, yep.
A lot of. Size copy. Help you to print and close down.
Um one of the things you mentioned was um. Uh. Um that there's a lot of work for the planning board to do in one meeting, so some thought maybe, is it too hard to get into detail and engage in the kind of conversation needed? And larger project, maybe workshop meetings. Um. I'm not a fan of having more than one meeting. Um and you know, it's already a lot of work. Um whether, um and that kind of goes into like, I think if I brought up how many meetings. I mean, how many applications can we deal with in a night? Do we have like a time deadline, do we have an application deadline or something like that? Um earlier in the year, we were here, so it was kind of pop. And you know, we work full-time jobs and.
Right.
Um and so whether there's a way to kind of manage the amount of work that's coming at us in um. I don't know how to spread that out, I'm not sure what my recommendation would be for that, but um. Maybe one system to all, uh with these checklists and applications are. More complete and it would require less time in a meeting to review an application, that then that would help a bit.
Right. And I think the, the notion of having, or at least on some applications, having. That preliminary review done by, you know, for the more complicated ones that um has that preliminary review that. Um either myself or the engineer or whoever other kind of expertise we need, kind of front loads. That would be helpful for you all, because that would give you um, you know, a kind of um. A starting list of. Questions to ask, just topics to discuss, not that that would take the place of anything you would add to it. But that might kind of jumpstart um, you know, the conversation to move it along a little bit. And, and you know, not every, you know, maybe there would be a workshop meeting only for certain, uh like some. You know, like the Iron Star was a big project that was very complicated and that maybe something like that, that would be triggered by. Either by size or by intensity of use or something that would give you an extra meeting here or there, so that. Even if you schedule that ad hoc, so that you um can move things along. So it could be on, on an as needed basis.
I thought you said workshop be considered training, because we all have to get four hours training.
You know, I guess it depends on, I mean, it could, it depends on what you're discussing in the workshop um. You know, the workshop is really a meeting, you're just not making any formal decisions um or approvals or denials, whatever, whatever it is, so. Uh it could, it certainly um could be considered training or, or have a component of training. Some planning boards reserve a little bit of time to get everybody up to speed on either new changes or a topic that. You, you want to discuss and make sure everyone is, is up to speed on, so you know, certainly if you wanted to, you could.
Thoughts, hopeful when you're doing like a long form seeker. It's nice to be able to have a conversation about things where you have to really. You have to write.
Yeah, it's very useful.
But I mean, not everything has long form.
Yeah.
Nan, I really um agree with, I think it's on page ten, number seventeen. Having the documents available for the public to review. I think that is a good idea if we can institute it, like have it on the last site so people can access that. On their own. That are going to be presented. The only issue is if there's like a last minute. Obviously, those couldn't be placed.
So I did um. I did send out the like simplified application for mantra. That was a result of um art or Carol asking her. And then me saying, okay, this is, you know, a very complicated application. You don't want the entire application. You want what's actually, you know, being reviewed. And so that was sent to him. That was also sent to you guys. If we do integrate a process where the application is actually. Um, reviewed for clerical completeness, but distinction with which Yan made. That will simplify my ability to not just send you, you know. Twenty emails on an application. I I had four um. Four copies of one page of the EAF for the mantra. Just because, you know, he kept on submitting it. Really refused to come in person. I said, okay, well, you know, there's a problem. He said, okay, well, you know, here's the revision. So they got it streaming. If we, if we have that moment where it's clerically complete, somebody, whether it's myself. And or Nan certifies that it's clerically complete, it'll be part of the year. You transmit it, you know, once. And post everything. Um, you and I and Bill had tried the Slack chat. You know, in the Dropbox, that kind of got placed on that burner as a result of Iron Star. You know, it's it's not hard once it's all together in one place. Problem is. The process to get it all together in one place is so drawn out and.
So you're gonna essentially be. For lack of a word, you'll be like the bottom. Not really bottom, but everything will have to go first to get the clerical.
Uh, somebody has to be. Nobody has um. The date. So it's a combination of. Three different people or forces making a determination that the application is complete. And then that's why a lot of your time is wasted.
So how, so who would actually determine that the application is clerically complete? In a real world example of this.
That is probably something that the zoning law currently. Dictates. Wants to change that. Then they could change it.
Well, so there's, so let me jump in the. When when I use the word clerically complete, it's really looking at that, let's say you get a um a minor subdivision in. And the subdivision law says that that the application has to include. The application form, the fee, a survey, um, the property lines, um, you know. Uh, the the names of all of the adjacent landowners within two hundred feet of the property. There's a whole list of. These things that the zoning says are what is part of the application. And so the clerically complete is simply saying, do they have a survey? Check. Do they have, does the survey show the property, um? The uh adjacent property owners within two hundred feet? Check. Um, does it have um existing conditions on the map? Check. And when when those, and that's not determining whether they're. Adequate or you need more information. It's simply the basic stuff that the zoning says should be part of an application. And, you know, that always, everyone always has the opportunity. To wa- ask the planning board to waive some of those submissions, but. Then at least when you get it, you know. Cause we do waste a lot of time and I I do a lot of, you know, reviewing where the application. It takes, you, they lose a whole month simply because they wait a month for the planning board to say, oh. You need to put the topographic lines on this map and then they've lost a whole month. So. Uh, my my feeling is it's better to have this checklist that's. Is it there? Yes or no? And then when it gets to you guys. You determine the adequacy of those and whether there are other information needs that you have. So for instance. Um, you know, like with the Iron Star, it took us months to get to. We needed photo simulations and we needed the water study. And all of those things. So that application wasn't ever even complete because. They never, that we, you didn't get the information that you asked for. So, so there's clerically complete and then there's adequacy of completeness to move the project forward.
Yes, so my question is who's going to determine whether it's clearly complete? How does that process work? If there, you know, if there's, imagine there's ten. Applications every month. Who's gonna make sure that all these ten applications are current? Clerically complete before they come here. Where's that? We're just, I'm just asking that at the moment. Like it's it's, it's what you're saying makes complete sense to me. I've been discussing this, you know.
Can I, can I just make a quick comment? As an applicant in many different towns, the easiest way for an applicant because. The normal person can't look at your two hundred fifty page zoning law and your subdivision law. And know exactly what's gotta be listed on everything. The checklist is a great idea and the easiest application for me to fill out. Are the applications that make sense when you fill it out, but also a checklist is attached to the application. So as an applicant, I gotta go down and physically check off if I've done all those things. And then sign that I have done all those things when I hand in the application. Therefore, I'm certifying to you that it's done. It's there and if I've screwed it up. Hopefully you're gonna catch it or Dan is a consultant is gonna catch it, but at least it's a starting point to the application uh. To know what he needs or she needs to bring before you. So you aren't so worried about that and you're actually worried about. What does this project specially need in this instance uh to conform to the comprehensive plan and. And uh all the town zoning laws.
Yeah, one of the.
That the owners is first and foremost on the applicant, then they can.
Right. If there's a complete, a complete application, then you can look at it and say it's either complete or it's not like. As a cursory review by you, not an indefinite.
Yeah, I think that, I think there is. I think I I don't know who is speaking, but I think that's a good point that the applicant. Can help themselves by having, you know. Having to know that they have to have that applic- that checklist as part of the application, but I think that. Uh, uh, and, you know, I can't presume what Jay's job description is gonna be, but. I think to a certain extent, that review, that initial review of completeness can be done. Um, at that level in some applications that might trigger that preliminary consultant's review. Would further, you know, dive into that so that by the time you get some of these projects get to you. Um, you know, all the ducks are in order and you're ready to really look at the substance.
One of my questions about that uh complete package. And I think in both site plan review and a review, it's like finally the applicants required. To show the natural resources. Um, and I'm, um, you know, some applicants do a very good job of that and. Uh, some don't. And so that seems to be. Um, something that comes up in our review here, uh, you know, the board is reviewing it. That, um, I guess once that's on the list, but to also direct. People, applicants on how to find these things. Um. The uh resource mappers and, you know, plumbing having GIS and D E C. This information's out there, but there's no direction from us here of how to find that. Our maps on our website are all over the place and um. You know, there's some in, you know, under planning board. There's some under, you know, just maps. There's, there it it's kind of a a mass. So, um, I'm not sure that's the best place to direct people to, but it certainly helps and. Section on our website could also have instructions of how to go to the mappers and.
Right. I think that's an excellent point and I I also agree with you that the website is not well organized. I have trouble finding things and I'm always sending Hugh a note, like, did you know this is not on the website? So. Um, that needs some work and I agree having the maps all in one place. Some communities where they they have their application form, you click on it, you can download it and copy it up. You can click on a link to get the um environmental assessment forms. The EAF mapper, um, you know, we can, we can have direct, you know, click on the maps to show, you know, the wetlands in the. Biodiversity map and all of that. So I think that's a huge tool that we don't utilize to the fullest yet.
When you email Hugh noting that there's something missing from the website, can you CC me?
Yes, absolutely.
Have the ability to make some edits to the website.
Okay.
That was my question on the check page.
Yeah, that the website.
So that was my question, but that's.
But there should be like just the planning board. Go here, everything on the. Lives there. CBA, go there.
So, so that's, I I guess after, it's like you're saying that we're gathering these questions where. We can put some things, um, comments in the Word document. Um, the, um, I guess again, I'm I'm curious of like. The town board agrees that we are making or agree with your recommendations. Um, yeah, who's gonna follow through and put these things on the website and who's gonna? I mean, I would think that we would have you do the checklist. Um, but implementing a lot of these things.
I guess someone's gonna fall on the us at the technology committee, but it's also, there's probably gonna have to be some outside work done if we're really gonna make this. Because none of us have enough time to really redesign a whole process.
Yes, I I can see this being a long-term um kind of installation, you know.
Yeah, it's right. It's something that'll ready, that'll evolve until it gets to a point, yeah, it's it's a big, it's a big deal. It's some of it, some of it's not so, they're getting a Dropbox and all the stuff, at least for us is in one place.
Yeah, well, I guess maybe in our, in our, in this whole review is the priorities. And I think that. What's, what's the worst?
You know, what are low hanging fruit? Or fairly right away.
That'll make a big difference too, so.
Yeah, that would be very helpful to hear back from you, what you think are. The thing, you know, both low hanging fruit that's easy to do, but also bigger priorities that, you know, may take. A little while longer, it may take the town board to allocate some funding to get done. Um, so that would be very helpful to hear back from you. You know, even if you just, you know, color coded the, I I mean, I put my priorities in there. But you might have different priorities. So even if you just, you know, color code, these are the five things we really wanna see happen, you know, in the next six months. That would be hugely helpful.
So is is this okay for each of us to edit this document? A lot of editing on there. Is that the best way for you to?
I I don't have a problem with that and then I'll just, you know, put it all together. Um, ultimately. It's still a memo from me to the town board, but uh, you know, uh, you know, send your comments or your edits um and I will compile it all.
Should it, should it be done like organized? Should everybody just, you know, do a track changes and then whoever changes it so that you'll be able to see?
You mean, so it goes around?
You could maybe write agreed.
As a board just need to organize like who's got it.
Well, here's another idea is that, you know, I mean, it it is my memo. I'm not necessarily looking for you to edit the text. But to add to it, comment about it, you know, add other ideas. We could, um, we could put it up as either a Google document, which I don't like, but we could do. We could also put it up as a shareable PDF that everyone could look at and then add comments in. And everyone would see everyone else's comments. So either any of those options that it makes it, it the easiest for you is fine.
I'm not sure how, how's everybody gonna edit and share the PDF?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, there, there's, um. There is a mechanism. We we do it all the time where we share a PDF and everyone can. Add, you know, you click on the te- you click on wherever you wanna add a comment and a little comment box pops up and you type in. Whatever you wanna say. But, you know, we could do the same thing with a Google Doc if you want. Whatever is easiest for you guys.
Alright, so how do we move this forward to the next step?
Well, we need to get our comments. To Nan, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you don't wanna share your comments, uh, if you, you know, it's not like there's a hundred of you. If you wanna each send me your individual comments, I'll just compile them all together.
Overloading you.
Yeah, I I think that that, you know, just it, cause you are gonna have a different perspective and just. Say whatever you wanna say, send it to me and I'll, I'll just recognize each of those comments as I, I might probably say like if someone commented on number. Seventeen, like you did, Colleen, I'll say, you know, the planning board thinks this is a really good idea or, you know, I'll just add to it.
So Nan, if we get you our comments in two weeks. And two weeks after that, our next meeting, would you be prepared to talk with us again?
Um, sure. I, you know, my goal is to get this memo to the town board. So. Do you, do you want to, I mean, I don't wanna prolong it and make it. More painful than it needs to be. Um, I mean, if you send me your comments. Do you want to have another meeting to go over it again or shall I just, just incorporate them all and send them on to the town board for consideration?
Those two weeks. We need clarification. Nan, were you going to be presenting at the January nineteenth?
I have not been asked to do that yet.
Just because if.
Because I haven't submitted it to the town board yet. Not formally. So I don't think that my interaction with the town board would happen until I get your comments and the ZBA's comments. Uh, and then I do a final version of the memo and then I will submit it to the town board.
So for us, it's two weeks.
That's great. I really appreciate everyone's time in reading it and offering other comments to uh make it as uh strong as we can. Alright, very good. Good luck. We'll see you soon.
Okay, I'm just going to add if you'd like me to see them. Ahead of when Nan's revisions come in, just CC me.
CC you on how it comes.
If you'd like, no pressure, but um with some of the suggestions and things are things that. I personally can implement by myself. I personally can implement by myself, though if you'd like perhaps maybe a little bit more feedback earlier. Maybe just C C them.
Like like just even create a checklist, that's. That's gonna be huge.
Yeah, yeah.
And you already started tonight with the resolution.
Wesley, you got five minutes.
All right, good night, everybody.
And don't give us a long spiel.
No long spiel, I was before you, five August, five July. For Asaskey's farm, Asaskey's farm has a five point nine acre parcel, which is on the east side across that hill. We got a driveway permit for that piece, we got B test of the uh the public notices went out. Uh to all the adjoining owners, the adjoining owners that surround that five point nine point uh acre parcel. Said, whoa, we don't wanna see a house near us, they went into negotiations and I.
You might open public hearing that we're gonna close, but.
We would like to close up public hearing and I didn't know whether I should revise that subdivision into a minor subdivision of the lot line alteration. So that five point nine acres is not gonna be a lot, part of it's gonna go to one acre, part of it's gonna go to another acre. Very simple, I should be able to be out here and commit an act now. So the five point nine acre piece was that piece?
Yeah.
Three point six one going here, two point three going here, five point eight nine acre piece with that L. That portion going to this parcel, that portion going to this parcel. So the five point nine, this horse scale, yes. This is going here, the original house site with the driveway that's coming here or here, so that eliminates that.
Okay.
We uh we did, and the one thing that was uh added to the map that uh uh we were under a new screen buffer. Note that uh was getting considered to be improved, I don't know what the thing through to that, but uh. That was the note that you wanted on there, the screen buffer and to make them aware that there are such things as uh. That's habitats along that and there need to be protected, so that was added as well. Uh note one, note two, specified parcel A, the three point six one will be conveyed to B. Then uh they'll be consolidated by legal instrument, which is the. Uh consolidation deed and not become a separate tax parcel, same thing note two is B for same. Uh so this one is going from fifteen point six seven acres to nineteen point two eight. This one's going from seven point five six to nine point eight six, approximately houses, blocks in the well, the block is. Lots of that cements are on the map, no zoning issues, no problems, just that I ran into.
No lots created. File everything since Jay. We'll see you next month.
You don't need a public. Well, if you wait there right now, could I possibly get a approval for a law line operation tonight from the southern? Wouldn't that be a board consensus?
You're not on the agenda, it wasn't.
I I was the, I was the public hearing, I was still hoping during.
One of one of Dan's recommendations. Is sorry.
But it is special service.
Not a special service, everything would use.
The public notice went out and this and the process worked.
It changed the application.
Because that, because the process worked.
Last thing to see in February.
You don't wanna be here later next, next month. Um Jay, how many copies? So these are the final copies, I just don't want them to get folded up or or lost and I did. I don't care.
Oh, no, that's for him.
I'll find my bands, hold on.
You got more stuff to talk about?
Yeah.
So the one thing I saw on there that was not, um the one thing from them, the board was. Wrote it down, I have to find it again, sorry, um. The answer to it said something about adding um. Uh an inspection, a um inspection fee.
Yeah. Inspection perhaps, which is in the code.
Yeah, but she said to add it as a fee.
Yeah, she said.
Yeah.
Just make it a fee. Um just every time there's going to be an inspection fee.
I got to pull it out of the. I don't think that I necessarily change. Official structure of the meeting, if that's, but that would require some law amendment. But I can place it in a schedule with some certain language. They.
Well, it says here, the town board needs to add inspection fee or inspection escrow to the fee schedule. So we would recommend it, I guess.
Right, so the fact that you're bringing it up now during the meeting, I'm hearing it. I'll, I'll make that change because ultimately what we've done in the past is the planning board suggests. The town board.
Okay.
And then they.
Okay, and so um would that be for all applications or does that change?
Thank you.
They plan reviewer specialty permit, I believe. There's only, um if you have this zoning on a computer or laptop. You could search by um. Whatever she mentioned.
Yeah, she meant correct, she meant the code, the code was, we're all code is.
And I had, I had seen that when I was answering a question regarding um. Some of the other correspondence around the preparation of Nancy. So I didn't realize that I could start doing that without the planning board.
All right, so I just, yeah, we we wanna make sure it's enough for engineering, especially for Swex. Is it what she think it's five hundred dollars? And I don't have no idea what an engineer costs to do that.
What if I could do it all?
Um and then.
Mention is escrow from viewer plan. So it is appropriate.
When when, so escrow can be, so we, so escrow is just an open ended thing, we just say we need more money cuz we're adding something that you have to comply with.
Yes.
We gotta get the client a bill.
You account, you have to account for everything that the escrow.
I don't know how we do it monthly.
Gotta keep it accountable, I mean, hi- historically, it's been a nightmare.
But um. It's ask for it, ask for it, ask for it, C C R and get it, you know.
So what I use, I ended up doing was actually having a spreadsheet. And so each application I accounted for everything because I didn't want. And so, yeah, you, you just have to keep, you just have to account for it, be able to provide the voices to that applicant. And you can replenish it. So, you know, once it gets to a certain level, you can say.
Did you say two fifty?
Does the board have to do that or do you see that?
The way that this currently structured in the law, I don't believe it would be my department in charge of. I believe it would be the zoning enforcement officer that would be overseeing that.
Because if it's something that we're asking for, um then we have.
We're, and we gotta tell, we've asked for.
Yeah.
All of the, well, now, if it's, if it's a uniform thing where every application of a certain type. It's triggered, it's very easy. Um so, for example, the last was application. Sorry to, um, right, but um, I can't technically enforce. That application.
Understood. You know, there's only enforcement.
Right, and um we did not establish that in the beginning that our engineer would. Do those inspections like we did with Schieber.
Right, but did you see that it was in the draft contract?
Yes, for resolution, we can't, this is, this is a learning process.
Yeah. So we're setting that escrow for that inspection fee.
And we don't use it.
And then so why does it also need to be a fee?
Okay, so.
She says inspection escrow to the fee schedule.
Because the fee schedule of the document itself.
But if this is escrow and we're determining.
We take, as we take escrow for the plan review, we haven't ever taken it to a contract for inspection. So there probably should be a line under it or two.
So that it's a standard that we're saying we're inspection.
If I have something that I can point to, that, you know, carries the way so the planning board and the town board, it's a lot easier.
Yeah, so do we need to ask our town engineer what that would?
No, because it's currently in the zoning, that's what I'm saying. I can pull what it's currently in the zoning as, put it in the fee schedule.
What what is currently?
The escrow.
No, no, she might as well guess it, we should think, what's, what's the amount? What is George gonna cost and go inspect?
Yeah, but I can't, I can't change that.
So it doesn't matter, we don't need to know.
No, because it's, it's currently written in the zoning. Five hundred dollars.
Right, so right, so, right, so if it, it says we collect five hundred, then it comes out to fifteen hundred.
But it.
But I can't change.
Collecting that, we just said now you're almost out of dollars.
Yeah. Right?
If you don't get your C O P, pay up.
That's kind of like the initial. Now, and then.
Ed is, Ed is in charge of the Schieber um inspection escrow. And also the um O N G.
Yeah, well. Guess I'm still very confused. About what Nan's suggestion was.
She just wants the public to be aware.
Okay. Okay, so it's not already, and that's all of it, yes, but what's in the zoning.
Yeah, exactly.
So the omission was an oversight on my part. Um but I can't, I can't change it.
Right.
You can consult George and, you know, kind of prove it on what would actually be required. But then we have to go to the Z R C.
Right, but that inspection thing is through Ed and so we're saying, though in our resolution. We want that to happen and then it goes to Ed's department to do that and build upon. That whole.
Um, they should provide the escrow prior.
Right, right, but 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 we spent the escrow five minutes of George's time, how do we even build it for the rest of us?
That would be on Ed, the.
Right.
You know, so like they won't get a C O if. Let's say two thousand dollars.
Right.
George is, you know.
Fee is five hundred dollars, public size is five hundred dollars and then it's two thousand dollars.
Yeah, each, each time. Each time it's different, it's different depending on the project, it's the indirect and driveway or.
We set the. Issue as far as we published it as its five hundred dollars and then we come back to, you know, and say, oh, I'm sorry, it's. Thousand bucks.
Five hundred dollar minimum or.
Or, yeah, right, like a, uh, you know, first deposit or initial deposit. But escrow was like.
The that two brand, so we don't, you know, and. So then start, we need to do that. Not.
No, we didn't, you gotta wait, we're not paying for any. Well, escrow is.
And also, he also went for abbreviated site plan or do not site plan.
You know, but he only went for the driveway, he never had a house, we never.
Yeah.
Decepted or anything.
I know, there was no house plans or anything like that.
Yeah, he just had a box on the plan. I think we only gave driveway approval, how he dragged the trailer up there, the limit up there.
Are you. The numbers.
Where's the, okay. So you guys, you guys went for the the number ten. The fee sent.
And came up with numbers that you thought, that the cost, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including the cost of consulting review, I reached out to Nan, she confirmed that it would probably take an hour or two. For most projects, to do a cursory review at the rate of about two hundred dollars. So each proposed fee should have the opportunity to go before man.
Right.
Yes. As they're currently drafted.
Right, since she's the one ultimately going to be collecting these things to.
I'm, I would.
No, I I mean, she's the. Higher in person, we should know their cost and then. You know, if she thinks a major subdivision application fee is gonna be two thousand dollars, then you should have that in here as two thousand dollars, five hundred.
The proposal contemplates moving all of the specialty use permit fees to five hundred dollars. Including like cell phone towers and the um. Floating business district, you think I should just keep every specialty use at five hundred? Or do you think I should?
Including.
Add five hundred to everything on that list.
So then it'll be like seven fifty.
Right, or a thousand.
I mean, there's nothing here that can. It's just the living facility is a multi million dollar and cell tower is also. My corporation trying to take.
Yeah, I think.
Commercial logging is big money, floating business district.
Um how do these trees compare to comparable sized towns? Like, are we in the realm of the ballpark of what we should?
In the realm of the ballpark of what we should?
I didn't look at that, I had. Spoken with um Joe and John.
Those there because they're being on the beach where I paid it, so. And they could be, but you can find that out when the date of their fee schedule is and.
Me, it just seems like if if.
I would also. Not making money. That's my question is.
Yes.
Is there some kind of accounting with the paid employees and the cost of? Keeping the lights on. For these tentacle meetings. You know, and and does that work? I mean, other than consultants and that's an expert thing and they're. Paying that fee, it's over not in debt for that, they're paying it anyway, so the fees are. The pay. You know, the um, yeah, they. Yeah. Yeah, well, you, all that kind of stuff, so. Ultimately, the town should not have a fee for someone to develop. Exactly. They're certainly not too. Yeah.
Oh, I don't.
Especially like we. We. To your. Right, right. And we we pass for escrow at that. Yeah, so.
Right, what what's the difference between an existing fee, what's relationship between fee, okay, very recharge to give for assistance of everything? And then what's the relationship that I need to our escrow account?
Escrow is definitely worth. It's like two. Yeah.
Everybody basically, okay.
Yes.
Black city of your job.
Right. In a visual impact study, well. So that you pay, so we might.
We gotta pay somebody to review.
We gotta do it.
When you're inspecting a driveway is one thing, if you're inspecting an enormous amount of silk.
So. I'd like to clarify, um. Right, the planning board chairman or is the the. Finding the site plan, the applicant shall pay the town for. An inspection fee established by the Enchrom Town Board. So it's not five hundred dollars. I can.
Yes.
I can reach out to George and ask.
And find like that.
You know, basically copy that section of the law.
Yeah, he's got to include travel, an hour. We've been wanting report or something.
God, what is it? Right.
Well, it's gonna depend on the process, on the time.
Yeah, I think you're probably you're gonna change. Putting your, whoever. You'd be constantly changing your law. If you if you put an actual. Yeah, yeah. It's at the maybe, maybe putting in a clause. Based on the rate. Yeah. That way it covers you like or covers you both the town. In that. It's whatever your or whatever the cost.
Whatever the consultants. Ten hours and.
Takes you out. And we, we don't know those costs, they may change. Right. Something like that. Yeah, allow that. Yeah, we don't, we don't set those costs.
But we just showed the defender, the defender.
Exactly.
Yeah, that wasn't it.
Yeah. Yes, we need to give the town as much flexibility in this.
Um. Special use permits, what's the?
So.
What's what? Oh, about this, do we want to add five hundred to the existing fee?
I would think it's fine, everything's enough.
So just now, the short term rental was a S S R D on my fault, yeah.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Right.
Park that up.
So if.
It is carved out, right?
First page. What I said. Put into Ed's. Um fees. Were in at least at a minimum collecting the fee for the S P R. Because what I found is. Like I had people in my office on the twenty third. And this, and they were both surprised to learn that I would also be collecting.
It's here again.
They were surprised to learn that I would also be collecting.
For this. Specialty use permit.
S T R specialty use.
So is it, but so this S T R special is probably this five hundred dollars also?
So I believe the way that structured it would be.
And show.
The total would be five hundred dollars. But right now it's split up between. Ed's department and my department.
So this year, this five hundred is the same as the first two, as of on the first day.
Right. But then. The distinction is because of his proposed. Renewal fee. Being different than what I'm proposing. The renewal fee is. I just used the hundred there. On the first page.
Oh, and and over here it's one hundred and fifty, excluding this.
Yeah.
Right, so I I tried to divorce it. I can put, you know. A little bit more information. In the planning board fees that, you know. It's the renewal will be for everything this except for the S T R, which this.
I think that makes that. Hmm. Okay. So they were, they were. Surprised that we that you were collecting a fee too?
Yeah.
But you have, we have to renew it.
Who's surprised the app?
Would you ask him last?
Yeah, I don't, I don't control what's owed to the applicant by other departments.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
I mean, it just, it just is one of those.
Okay.
So if you want to raise S T R, this is what it costs.
Right.
You don't want it, don't be.
I'm making money doing it.
Right, it's a pretty straight.
But this is the. At the bottom in the B, but.
I can, I can clarify.
Yeah, so that's not at the bottom of page.
But I mean, I should even. You know, he. The half of all. Um. Special use permits and not do an S T R as an exception. So then it would be two hundred fifty. But then it's inconsistent like that.
Inconsistent with that's hundred.
Yeah.
Right, for the renewal.
He does a lot of work on it, it's not. Yeah.
Right.
I can. I can debate this fee. No, no, I know, I'm saying there's a lot in the special for the for the S T R.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
A year, a year.
So. You're okay?
Yeah.
Do we, any other thing that we said? We just need to remember.
So are we gonna?
The escrow is, it's not written anywhere, we have to put that in our own checklist, yeah. So can you add for? Very good.
So it should be. We're gonna do the formal.
Formal.
Yeah, it should be in there all the time. Right, Jack? You're gonna do the formal resolution, there should also be a line for the the. Inspector.
Okay.
Escrow.
I think we should have a checklist that we. No, it should have many, so one was for us and the review board. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, or a little earlier before the resolution. Write it on your hand, oh, yeah.
So you're gonna be, so you're gonna revise the planning board fees? We'll recover and talk about slightly, yeah. You're gonna add five hundred and all stuff on the bottom.
It says the town board there was. You think you have five hundred to.
Yeah.
I would also add five hundred also to the major subdivision. Seems like.
Oh, a major, yeah.
A major should, major should.
We don't think they buy the lot too.
Uh, yeah. Over four, so like a major to every lot.